Go ahead, state your name and affiliation, ma'am.
Good evening, Dr. Wright, and to the council. I'm Frank McLeary, the mayor of Andrews. As someone stated earlier, Andrews, as we all know, that borders the Williamsburg County. In fact, some of our citizens are annexed from it. And so, the concerns of Andrews, obviously, mayors, the folks who spoke earlier, in addition to, we have our schools along the route. These 150, proposed 150, dump trucks will be traveling every day for a couple of decades. So, we're talking about the environmental impact. We talk about the impact on the infrastructure that's already right now, it's in its worst state. I'm not so sure that those things have been considered. The other thing, we have wells out there as well. I have two wells across the county line that service the companies along an industrial park over there. So, we have great concerns about what's happening, or what's about to happen if this thing goes through. But I want to applaud you all for your efforts, again, to make sure that things are done properly. And I will say this, I think we're all aware of this phase two of Andrews bypass that has been ongoing for years. That project has now been stopped because there have been environmental concerns that were overlooked when they did their first assessment. They're having to go back to do this all over again because things were missed. And I think the same thing is happening in the state. So, I invite you to take a look at that environmental certainty as part of that project and see how it impacts as it goes directly, very close to where this mining area is supposed to take place. So, I ask you to do that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do you have any others?
Good evening, I'm Michelle Lewis. I'm the coacher of Black River Advisory Council. I've sent several of you letters recently. I'm also resident miller on the Black River. I just want to speak on behalf of the council. We just had a meeting this evening, and we want to thank you for addressing this, taking it up on council, and also we support an ordinance for six-month moratorium.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And we're going to go ahead and call to order our regular scheduled council meeting. Do we have Reverend Eugene Burge? Yes, come on forward. Reverend Eugene Burge is going to deliver our invocation. He is from Mount Moriah and St. John Baptist Church. We thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Pray our Father, our God, first of all, we thank you for being who you are. And I want the Creator of heaven and earth. We thank you for this gathering together this day. And as we come together, dear God, help us to realize who we are. We are the handmaids of your hand. And we just thank you and ask you that you would bless all of us to do the thing that you would have us to do. Bless us in a special way. We thank you now for this town of Kent Street. We ask that you would bless our officials as well as our appointed officers. We thank you, dear God, or I'd say that you are the Creator and the Father. And as we come together this day, we trust that all things we do and say will be done decently and in order and according to thy laws. We ask now that you would bless the council of this state, of this county, of this city, of this town, and just lead and guide us in the right path. We know that you have paved the way. You are the way to light the town. Now, help us to follow therein. Help us to love one another. Help us to have equal respect and care for one another. Help us to be concerned one for another. And we ask now that this meeting will be one of long remembrance and not forgotten. Bless the leaders now of our country, of our state. And dear God, when this life journey is over, when this battle has been fought and the victory has been won, let us be able to stand together and to hear your voice saying, "Well done." In Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Everyone, we see the copy of the minutes from our hearing, from our council meeting that was scheduled for November 19, 2019. We need a motion for approval. It has been motioned in second. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it. Our next order of business is ordinance, for third reading ordinance 2019-03, an ordinance to amend the agreement for development of a joint county industrial park executed on April 24, 1995, by and between Berkeley County, South Carolina, and Williamsburg County, South Carolina, providing for the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park so as to include additional property in Berkeley County as part of the joint industrial park and other matters related thereto. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve third reading of ordinance 2019-30. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it, and it's so ordered. Next is the second reading for ordinance 2019-04, an ordinance to initiate a study and recommendation as to appropriate regulations of mining activities in Williamsburg County and/or regulate the withdrawal of groundwater for de-watering operations to impose a six-month moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for building permits for structures to be used to benefit and to be integrated with mining operations or other activities involving withdrawal of groundwater for the purposes of de-watering, a site for the purpose of initiating a mining operation, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Pleasure, council.
I recommend that we accept, make a motion that we accept, second reading ordinance 2019-04.
It has been motioned in second. All those in favor for second reading for ordinance 2019-04, please signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it. Next on our list is proclamation and resolution, proclamation 2019-01. It is a proclamation, and it is in your package, in support of Disability Awareness Month. Do we have any representatives from that organization here today? With the pleasure of council to approve this proclamation and/or resolution. It should be in your package.
We'll make a motion to accept the proclamation.
It's been motioned in second. All those in favor for acceptance of the proclamation 2019-01, please signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it.
$98,000 to pay off our current lease with the debt. And the other problem we have is something we have now with disability problems and other issues that we have. I don't want to call their names, but they have the layoffs. They have ceased to support us in the way that we need them to support us. So, we went out to find a better solution for the county to better service.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Jim. What about services, service contracts repaired? Do we also have a service contract with Canada?
This contract covers all maintenance, all toner, everything to do with it. All we have to do is place a column and detect if it's, we pay no more.
Any other questions? Hearing none.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. With the pleasure of council.
I'll offer a motion to add to why that we go ahead and accept, approve this contract.
It's been moved and second, a motion and second resolution, or resolution 2019-02, for resolution 2019-2. All those in favor of accepting the resolution, please signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it, and it's so moved. The next order of business is our committee report. And I believe we have our transportation executive director here. Councilman Knight is going to go ahead and do it.
Transportation committee met, and this is a quarterly thing we had to do for transit that stayed quiet. And it break out as follows. October, November, and December. In October, in October, $264,866.79 was taken in. In November, $39,666.60 was taken in. December, $436,206.49 was taken in, a total of $740,139.88. Passionate, passionate that was served. Demand respond was $16,349. Contract was $11,738. Medicaid was $3,186, a total of $31,273. Revenue for the whole three quarters, for the quarter, was $740,139,000, uh, $740,139.88. Expenditure was $436,287.96. That is on the quarterly report for transit and its revenue. That is something that required to do this review every quarter. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the quarterly report revenue.
Motion in second. All those in favor of accepting the committee, Transportation Committee report, please signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it. Today?
Yes, we have another. This is, uh, this is Winnebago County Transit System, 2019, 2020, proposed budget. This budget is, uh, transit budget has already, always have to be approved before our county budget early because it goes into the state. And we'll give you the breakdown of what is expected. Revenue, federal, federal portion would be $795,000, $795,164. State would be $256,934. County portion would be $205,691. Contract would be $596,525. Fair box, $630,000. Now, this is built in to be with a 2% increase. Uh, this 2% built in increases. If the county goes with 2%, then this is what transit goes with. If the county decides to go with 0%, then this 2% will not be actual. If it go to 3%, then it would be 3% for the county transit. So, that gives a run total of $2,484,314.70. That is the new proposed budget for 2019, 2020. And that's my, our Transit Committee recommendation, that's my motion.
A motion was presented, and it was second. All those in favor of approving the budget for Williamsburg County Transit System, please signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it, and it's so moved. The Finance Committee met today, and members of the Finance Committee were present. We had a presentation by Ms. Norma Cyrus, our tax collector. She appeared before Finance and informed them, informed us of research of finding a reliable company to effectively and respectfully pursue delinquent taxes in the county. After receiving all the information, the Finance Committee recommended, this, said the recommendation that it be presented to full council for approval to enter into an agreement with American Financial Credit Services aimed to provide delinquent tax tracing, billing, and recovery service that will utilize acceptable methods and procedures in a professional and ethical manner in accordance with the federal and state law. Director Cyrus is here with us tonight. If you all have any questions, she can speak to or request. Might I add, there is no fiscal impact associated with us taking on a contractor to assist with this. No question? The motion to approve the recommendation from Finance Committee? It is moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it. For, um, the next order of business is the Employee of the Month. This employee has been employed with Williamsburg County full-time for over nine years. He, along with one additional person, is responsible for providing IT services and support to more than 18 departments, and has always provided support to some of our neighboring townships that didn't have a person to work on their IT needs. Having this many departments and being responsible for bringing this county's IT section to the 21st century while continuing to look for more ways to improve our technological place in the world is someone for us to be proud of. He is a self-starter and works with little to no supervision. Anything you ask of him to do, he is always willing to do, go far beyond the call of what is expected. His passion for his work and the dedication to our departments as well as other entities makes him a viable selection for Employee of the Month. Jeff Wilkins has come to our rescue, whether day or night. We consider him a member of our emergency response team. At this time, it is my pleasure to award Jeff Wilkins Employee of the Month for Williamsburg County Government. We had two appearances. I must say that our Employee and Department of the Month program is going very well. How many do we have? Entries?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six entries this month, which is rare. So, our organ, our group are just going to have a good time in trying to select these Departments of the Month as well as these employees of the month. Uh, we have appearances from Mr. Harry Darby, the coach for the C.E. Murray High School Golf Team. Sir, would you come on up?
On behalf of the C.E. Murray Golf Team, I would like to thank the community for all that they do to support our team. Um, I would also like to thank the committee for all their love and support to make this team possible and keeping the sport alive. Um, another big thank you to the county supervisor and the county council for their support through the tournament that was passed Friday. Um, we did very well. We very appreciate it. Um, we're still in the process of soliciting funds for our state tournament. So, we do gladly accept donations if you guys are happy to apply. But, um, we do, we, uh, we do appreciate everything that, uh, all of the community and the council has to do for us. And once again, just a thank you to all of you who support us. And, of course, we got to thank the source, Mr. Darby, for making this team possible.
Hold on, you said you had some money. You about to walk off? What is the pleasure? Who, someone else want to talk?
Obviously, a few short words. Good evening, everyone, first and foremost.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Kerry Singleton. I'm with the golf team as well. We would like to thank you all for all of your donations. As you all know, it's a struggle for youth involvement. So, when we do have some extracurricular activities, we try to keep them going alive and well. So, we like to thank you all so much for all that you are doing, and we asking for your continued support.
I guess I have to ask you all. What is the pleasure of council? To continue to help these young folks continue their endeavors?
I want to know how they've been doing in the past year as it relates to standings and the district state, et cetera. Because I'm asking really, I don't know. I heard that y'all was doing pretty good. But I wonder, I was wondering how, how well did you do the last year?
Uh, we did pretty well. Um, I'd say it was a blast. So, we did pretty good.
Did y'all get invited to any full year tournament, anything?
Um, I did. Myself, I did. Um, I've been eager enough to invite my teammates along with me, but I just got an invitation this past Sunday to participate in a tournament. Normally, me? Well, I can tell you, I've learned to know that golf is a sport of inconsistency. So... I'd appreciate to shoot in the 40s.
And this is my first year. Just now, I'm starting. So, I am learning. As David said, it's an inconsistent sport. But, you know, I will say that we do have a strong golf team, a strong coach for working with me because I suck at this sport so far. But they've been working with me, and I'm getting a little bit better, so, yes, sir.
Let me just say, can we have any of the teams, team members that participated in the recent tournament? Can we get y'all to stand up? Very good.
He looks a little...
Thank y'all. So, what is the pleasure of council?
Dr. Wright, what I want to do, I want to challenge Mr. Darby to a match. And if he wins the match, I'm going to give the entirety of my discretion there.
Mr. Darby, did you hear that challenge?
I answered.
Oh, boy!
I don't know how much, but I have a lot of stress in that, council. I put in $200,000 in District 3.
$300,000 in District 4. $150,000 in District 5.
$200,000 in District 6.
$100,000 in District 2.
$200,000 in District 9. Okay, hold on, we want to give you a total. $1350. Thank you. Can we get a motion? You have a motion again? All those in favor, thank you. All those in favor for the donation for our golf team, signify by saying aye. Opposer's the same. The ayes have it. It is so ordered. Thank you, gentlemen. Fran, I don't want to butcher your whole name, but I know you as Fran Battle. So, please come on forward. I don't want to butcher the whole name. She's with the CEO and president of Personal Touch Beauty and Barber College.
Hello, everybody. I bring y'all greetings from Personal Touch Beauty and Barber College. My name is Fran Jeter Battle, and I recently sent a letter out to some of you guys about what's going on with Personal Touch College. Um, the letter stated that we are trying to meet obligations that are needed to be met to move forward on making the right connections with the United States Department of Education. Personal Touch College is now an accredited school here in Williamsburg County. We are in the last phase of meeting certain standards to receive Title IV funding. We are in the last phase of meeting certain standards to receive Title IV funding. And we are also asking for your support, support in assisting and implementing our new smart systems. It is an online school management and record tracking software that will provide us with several detailed services. The smart system will also provide accreditation and Title IV services such as the student portal, modal, mobile grading, consulting, and financial aid services. Smart training, most importantly, the software will ensure that our school will stay in compliance with NACAS. And that's our governing agent with the school. Um, but we are really, really excited about, um, our school finally being a, an accredited school here in Williamsburg County. It was, um, an experience out of this world, but, um, again, we're excited and we're also asking for contribution from, from the council. Thank you. Yes, it's a nonprofit organization. Thank you.
Man, I was, I was, I was gonna make two hundred dollars for District Four.
Thank you.
One hundred dollars, District Three?
One hundred dollars, District Two?
Thank you. Thank you.
We all want to look.
I know what look at for you at, fine.
One hundred, we're at the end of our calendar year, so we all, we're pretty impressed with this, and we're not good. We get you. One hundred, District Two. That's my motion.
And I think, Miss, Miss. You said a hundred? And Supervisor's office, one hundred.
Okay. And thank you so much.
Make your motion. In second. Uh, all those in favor for the donation to the Personal Touch Beauty and Barber College, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is the same. The ayes have it.
Thank you. I apologize for my swift movement. Uh, our attorney that's working alongside of us with the, um, mining ordinance and moratorium, he is here standing.
Is there anything you wanted to say and submit to record?
Just submit to the record. This is not as scary as it looks, uh, and I'm not gonna read any of it. I have prepared an index summary and I have a copy for each of you if you would like it, uh, which highlights the key points. The purpose of this, of course, is to, this is documentation, almost all of it from DHEC, uh, about past problems with limestone quarries, particularly the one in Jamestown. For whatever reason, there don't seem to be any studies of problems at the limestone quarry in Suttons. I don't know why that is. But there are five technical reports here, two prepared by state employees, one in nineteen seventy-seven, one in nineteen seventy-eight, and three technical reports by engineering firms, two from S and M E, one from law engineering. I'm collapsing this because Supervisor Wright instructed me to be as brief as humanly possible. All of the technical reports say exactly the same thing. Pumping out the groundwater from limestone formations like the formations that underlie Williamsburg County is just like the one in Jamestown, causes several problems, sinkholes being the most frightening of them. Uh, there are specific examples in, uh, long chronologies that DHEC prepared which are in here, chronologies beginning in nineteen seventy-five going all the way to nineteen ninety-one. They would get complaints, they'd visit, they documented, they took pictures and so forth. Uh, a corn combine was combining corn, a cornfield, got swallowed almost entirely by a sinkhole. A lady was feeding her chickens, sinkhole appears under her. She was, uh, she survived. Uh, she was injured. They just happen, uh, just like that. Also, water pollution is a problem, which is detailed in these reports. Uh, several, uh, problems associated with water quality, a high pH is the, the most concerning one. This is, this is all related to the pumping out of, of groundwater. Uh, drying up of ponds, streams, swamps, that all happened in Jamestown, uh, and it is all documented in these reports. Um, as one of the speakers noted, uh, the technical literature indicates that limestone is probably, is not definitively known, but probably under all of Williamsburg County. Uh, in nineteen fourteen, the U.S. government noted that limestone was being, uh, quarried in, in Williamsburg County. Uh, I have a memo in here that reflects a conversation I had with, uh, the South Carolina Geological Survey's expert on, uh, geology in this area, Dr. William Dorr. He says that limestone probably is under all of Williamsburg County. May not be in commercially, you know, usable quantities. He said, you don't know until you go down and, and sample it. Also in here are, there is the proposed mine permit, uh, by RDA, uh, proposed permit that DHEC proposes to issue, which is a, a, a dry mining process, pumping out the groundwater. And there are reports from, uh, two experts, uh, one an engineer, Steve Powell, who opines that if that were done, there would be impacts, uh, up to three-quarters of a mile away from the, the pumping, a half mile to three-quarters of a mile. All, um, non-flowing, uh, swamps and streams would be drained dry, he says. That would include, according to a report by the Britman Company, three hundred and seven acres of wetlands in, on and around the RDA mine site. And then last, there is a letter from, uh, South Carolina Department of Natural Resources, uh, which expressed their serious concerns about the draining of the wetlands because of the effect that that has on wildlife. With that said, I'd note, uh, uh, my colleague here, uh, from Mr. Ware's office noted that Mr. Ware and I have had, I think we've exchanged like five emails today, that is correct. And there are ongoing negotiations, uh, largely between the Coastal Conservation League's attorneys, the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, and Mr. Ware. I have participated in those. And there is a, a great desire to see those come to, to fruition. So, and I, with, with Supervisor's, um, authority and y'all's approval, I will continue to have those discussions with them. Having said that, though, I mean, it's important, uh, just to, to, to note that the proposed ordinance, which is still before you, is not aimed at the RDA mine. It, it's, it's genesis is the concern that there is so much area in Williamsburg County where there is minor limestone that you could have the same sort of dynamic. And this record, I believe, supports a genuine concern that, that justifies your inquiry into whether you want to adopt your own mining ordinance. That's the purpose of it. You have any questions for me? Yes, sir?
Similarly, it's almost our foregone conclusion, similarly, that the limestone mine will take place. And you just mentioned some bad things that have happened as a result of limestone mining. If any of these things or anything similar to those that you mentioned were to happen, happen in Williamsburg County, in that area, can and will the limestone company be held responsible or be liable for those happenings?
It's a, this certainly is a, a question of, of a lawsuit which would involve facts and the law. The law would support liability, but the problem is the facts tying the, the actual occurrence of the damage to the pumping out of the groundwater. The, the key here is that the real threat of physical harm, sinkholes, water pollution, things like that, is the pumping out of the groundwater. Uh, all of these, these reports here note that sinkholes occur naturally. They, it happens over time. But none of the problems at Jamestown and also across were regarded by all, any of those five reports as naturally occurring. They were all tied directly to, uh, pumping out the groundwater. If, if the, the mine proponent is prepared not to do that, to, to mine in the wet, as they say, which is what Martin Marietta is currently doing at the same quarry in Jamestown that caused all the problems, that removes the, the risks of physical harm. And that, that leaves you with other issues, uh, time and, and, and days of operation because this operation could be very intrusive to people's lives. Uh, and the, the mayor's concerns are also, uh, things that, that could also be dealt with and I believe are being actively discussed. So hopefully you won't, we won't get there. Uh, sinkholes, if you don't pump out the groundwater, you're not gonna have sinkholes. You're not gonna have a disastrous rise in pH in Murray Swamp, which would be disastrous for fish resources.
All right, but in layman's terms, nutshell, if it can be proven that any of those things occurred as a result of the mining itself of the, of the limestone, they can, probably will be held accountable, even if you have to get into lawsuits, but they will be.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I believe that that is an accurate statement. Yes. And I, I would say that, that's what brought, and these documents also reflect, that is what brought an end to dry mining at Jamestown. It wasn't, I'm sorry to say, the state. The state studied the problem for fifteen years and never did anything to cause it to stop. It was a lawsuit brought by two guys I'm glad to say I know, I went to law school with one of them, Ed Westbrook and Chris Holmes and a number of others, uh, at that point, point in twenty nineteen, ninety's. Yes, sir? Deliver this to you, Tim.
Hearing none. We have a motion for adjournment. So moved in second. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose is the same. The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.